Okay. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Let the record show, Mr. Hoff is absent again. Do we need a roll call?
Yes, you do.
Carrie Ellis. Here. Justin Thomas.
Yes.
Cory Jones.
Here.
Scott Hoff.
Not here.
Tara Bowman.
Here.
Matt Mecca.
Here.
Amy Wild.
Here.
Alright, I'm declaring a quorum. And I'm going to read the district statement to an, the district statement, mission statement is to ensure that students excel with intellect and virtue inspired by innovated, innovative educators who engage and challenge each individual. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and do we have any changes to the agenda? Cory?
I move to remove Action Items D and E from this evening's agenda.
All in favor to approve the, approve the agenda with the adjusted changes?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved. Public comment, I have Ms. Kimberly turning in a public comment. Good to see you again.
Good to see you too.
You want to come forward, or you just want to be casual, whichever?
Well, you gotta have a microphone.
Gotta have a microphone.
Um, I wanted to share, if we can go through it real quick, it's just, the Cocoa Beach Spring Training, the front page is all of the contacts that I've been in contact with. The general manager, the housing director, um, the scheduler for all of our games. She has found us the teams and the games and the fields and the practices and the times. And they also have a medical advisor that will be there every time we're at the field. Whether it's a practice or a game, there's always a doctor on staff. Um, the second page is the games. Now, these are our varsity games only right now, because those are the ones that we had to get approved through the WIA. We are playing teams from Minnesota, New Jersey, Ohio, um, a couple from Ohio and West Virginia. So the girls are very excited about that, just, just to have that diversity and play teams from other states. That's very exciting to them. Um, we did get the approval for the interstate competition waiver from the WIA. We have signed approval, written approval from them. So we have that taken care of. Um, the next two pages, I kind of put together a basic, basic itinerary at this point. We are going to play ball. We are going to eat, sleep, and play softball. Um, we're not doing any tourist activities. You know, I kind of broke it down of when they wake up, um, what we're going to do. And curfew times, we have set at 11 o'clock curfew every night. Um, they will know that night what our plan is for the next morning, where we have to go. Um, with that said, we also have, the airlines are all purchased. Sharon was wonderful, she helped me do that. We got, um, all 17 of us, myself plus 16 girls paid for in full. The money was donated from the Home Run Club to the activity count, and then Sharon helped me get that taken care of. We have five girls that are going one way, because they are then coming back with their parents. Because we're going over spring break, and we're going to be there from Saturday the 24th through Thursday the 29th. Those five ladies are staying with their folks for the rest of the spring break, um, and coming back with them. It seems at this point, we have all but one family going. So all of our families but one seem to be going. Um, whether they're driving, flying, that's all on their own, it's not, not our responsibility. So, um, little bit of information, we're, we're traveling out of Milwaukee, traveling to, um, traveling via Southwest Airlines, both there and back. I shared with you the flight numbers, confirmation numbers. Um, we're going to be, going there, we have to have a layover in Atlanta. We did that because we had to, you know, stay within budget. Um, but we just have a short layover, which kind of works out, because we'll be able to eat dinner while there, and then finish our travels on to Orlando. And then, once we get to Orlando, then we'll travel from Orlando, we'll rent a van, myself, I will be the driver. And I will take eight girls with me, or seven girls with me, seven or eight. Um, and then, we're also going to be working with the transportation company that I also gave you later in this packet information on, that will be helping transport the rest of the girls for us. So, we'll, we'll get there, um, trap, that first whole day is all travel, as you can see. Um, and then, so there's no games, no practices, it's kind of get there, get settled, get accustomed to the area. And then, we start right away the second day with a practice. Um, on the 27th, you know, breakfast, load the van, get to the practice field, things of that sort. Let's see, Southwest, we have no baggage fees, which is nice too. We also have multiple families that are driving trailers, so they are going to be taking a lot of our gear for us. Because softball has unfortunately a lot of stuff we have to take. We have to take game balls, we have to take, you know, nets, and so, we have a lot of families that are stepping up, helping us with that. Um, the fields, we always play at the same fields, they're called Chainah Lakes Softball Complex. Um, I showed, shared a picture and map of all that. Um, all of our games are there, all of our practices are there, which is in a nice, one, simple location. Um, kind of did a little research on security and issues, I couldn't find any problems there. I found a lot of good reviews from families that have been there in the past. Um, there is no admission fees, so none of our families have to go pay to see their kids play. There is concessions there, so we don't have to leave to eat, we can eat there, we can bring our own food in, they have no issue with that. Um, let's see, I then, then shared the invoice with our remaining balance from the Space Coast Spring Training invoice. We've made two payments of $750 each payment, um, and we've been ahead of schedule by over a month on our payments. So, the previous payment was due on January 1st, we've already paid that last month. So, we have a balance due to them for $6,805, and that is for all of the housing, the hotel. That is for all of our games, all of our umpires, all of our practice fields, that's everything included in it, that's our balance due. Um, so, like I said, our, our flights are paid for. Um, the Home Run Club will be collecting money and continue to raise money for transportation to pay for that. And they will also be working to raise money to pay for the food, for the girls. Our goal is that all 16 girls go without putting out 10 cents. And we've been working very hard, as you know, at it. Um, you know, the, the parents have been awesome, they, they did the bizarre and just did excellent at it. We've been selling affi tapples, and that was above what we, we wanted to do. So, we're going to continue to work, we, we need your help, you know, we're going to be putting through some more fundraiser forms for concessions and things, little things to sell, just to help us get to where we need to be. Because my goal still is to not have these people put out a penny. And it, it's doable. And we're going to show you the budget in the last couple pages for that. Um, I shared happy hour shuttle. I did a lot of research on transportation companies down there, looked through hundreds of reviews for every company. Kind of really wanted to make sure we went with a, a good reputable company, a family-owned company that's been in business for a while. What they'll do is they'll bring a van to the airport, pick us up, drive us from Orlando to Cocoa Beach, drop us off, we'll stay the night in the hotel, they'll be back in the morning, pick us, they'll be our transportation for our extra girls back and forth, all practices, all games. And they will also then take us back to the hotel, uh, to the airport. Um, I have quotes from them. They're about $700 for the entire week, which is not bad. Um, they're, they're, they've been wonderful to, to deal with and talk to, and they're just on board with whatever we need. So, I included an email that I had worked with them on, and they sent me their pricing on that. And then, they just need confirmation of flight numbers and all of that. And then, what I shared last two pages, is actually from the Home Run Club. This is, I asked them for a breakdown of their financials. I'll be honest, it's a little confusing, the way they did it. I, I looked at it several times myself, at first, I went, mm, okay, where, and I've had several parents ask me, help me, help me figure this out. Um, I, I wanted to share, so you know, kind of know what they're doing and how they're doing it, and their explanation for things. We are on target, also, is why I wanted to share this. We're, we're on target to, to pay everything. We have, you know, they kind of divided it up by date, with money coming in, debits and credits, and, but then they also added at the bottom estimated expenses, and, you know, what they still need to raise. So I, I know it might be a little confusing, but if you kind of really go back and forth and look at it, it, it explains itself. That's 80, 83? 80, okay, yeah, yeah. That, not me, that's what the Home Run Club has. Correct. And we've already paid $1,500 to the softball program. Um, outstanding, we have that, that invoice I showed you, what was it, 6,800? Um, I'm estimating about $3,000 in food for all of the girls' meals, that might be a little high, we're right around there. Um, uh, transportation, a rental van for myself through Alamo is under $500. And with the happy hour, it's about 7, 7.50. So, that is the only remaining expenses we will have. You know, like I said, nothing extravagant, you know, we're going, the, the Home Run Club is, is, is trying to raise as much money they can, so that they have extra for unexpected expenses, you never know what comes up.
Awesome, does anybody have any questions for? We have, can we have questions?
Absolutely, there is a code of conduct through Space Coast Spring Training. There is a, a contract for housing that I signed, that I am guaranteeing them certain night hours or quiet hours, um, behavior issues, um, yeah, and we've, we've also, well, that was my question, is, does the school board have one? There was a question I had asked Mr. Pickett, is there an additional form? Because this is a very out-of-state trip and, there's 16, there's 16 girls, there's four rooms for the girls, and I have my own private room right next to them. There's four girls per room, and I have put two seniors in every room. That was another question, I am the only school employee at the time, traveling, which is why I'm the only driver, as well as we had to hire a transportation company, make sure we stay in the guidelines of, I believe it is nine students per vehicle. Um, you know, I've asked Mr. Pickett multiple times, because my parents have asked me also, is there a chaperone restriction? I've got no 100% concrete answer, so I'm kind of, need your help on that.
So there's nothing by board policy, that's usually determined by the venue. So if you go to the Milwaukee Zoo and they say 20 kids per adult, that's the standard. If you go somewhere else, it might be 10 per adult. It's dependent upon the venue. That'd be, the travel agency would determine that. So,
No. I mean, they do require a head coach, um, and the maximum is 16 players, and we are taking 16, so that we can get both varsity and JV games.
Coach is there, and you may have already worked this out, will there be an assistant coach along with you? And/or is there a possibility that you may have split games?
Okay, I have asked Mr. Pickett regarding an assistant coach, because right now, we do not have one that's been hired. Um, Coach Vic Bose has, has offered, has been, shown her interest, so we kind of need her to commit to that. Um, because we, we looked at, what are we going to do with the freshmen? What, what if we have freshmen that want to play, but we're not taking them because they didn't raise funds? At this point, I only have two freshmen that have committed to me, that they want to play high school softball, two. And this is over spring break, and this is four days. And we may just ask them to stay home, or get them some training at Whitewater with their coaches, or, I don't, you know, that's kind of a tough situation there, um, it's, Mr. Pickett is not going. We do have multiple families that are staying at the Hilton with us, so.
There's no male?
No. No, these are all girl, these are all, these are all young ladies, and, you know, I coached them last year, and I believe I'm pretty good at setting my expectations, and, and them knowing that here's my line, and you don't cross it. Um, anything can happen. We're actually meeting, I'm meeting this Friday with the girls again. We're constantly kind of talking and making sure they're on, with the understanding of how important this trip is, and they're setting an example, and, so that, that will be a continual thing. Um, there's no guarantees, you know, I, I pray nothing goes wrong, I pray they all behave, I will do my best, and, believe me, I'll come back needing a lot of sleep, because I'll be up all night checking on them, and, you know, I, I'm, I'm just hoping that they, this is a good experience for them, by putting two seniors in every room, and, you know, making them responsible for their room, and no one is to go anywhere alone. You know, when they go anywhere, it's going to be in their group, their four, group of four, and,
Okay, I think it, I think you've got it under control. And thank you very much for coming and giving us an update on that, we appreciate that. Should be fun. Any other board comment? Ms. Walters, did you have anything to say? Alright. Yes, smile. That costs mommy a lot of money. Alright, so, board monitoring.
I'll just do a quick overview for you of the results of the 2016-17 school report card. I did set at your place a copy of the district report card. So, just as a reminder to everyone, that these are based on the Forward exam results. Uh, the state testing system has changed over the last four years. Uh, four years ago, it was called the Wisconsin Knowledge and Concepts Exam. For one year, three years ago, we had the Badger State Exam, and for the last two, we've had the Forward Exam. Um, we've been told that that contract with the vendor for Forward is a 10-year agreement, so we have eight more years of this particular type of testing. Testing is done in grades three through eight in English Language Arts and Mathematics. Also adds, um, in grade four and eight, Science, and also Social Studies, grade four, eight and 10. So if you're a fourth or an eighth grader, you have a lot of testing that's done during that time. Um, I think you're familiar with having seen this format now, a couple of years in a row. Um, there's a overall accountability score that's in the center of the state of Wisconsin, in the upper left-hand corner. There are then a number of different priority areas that, um, the, the district and schools are measured against. The easiest way to think about student achievement is student achievement. How far are you progressing in reaching goals in English Language Arts and math in particular? Um, district growth or school growth might be thought of more as, um, a line that's moving from the lower left-hand side to the upper right-hand side. So are students making gains at a rate that is to be expected? Closing gaps might be considered to be closing gaps for particular subgroups of students. They might be special needs students, they might be students of poverty, they might be English language learners. So these are subgroups of students, and are we closing gaps for those particular groups? Are you not picking me up? Okay, alright. So, I guess that's the overview. Here are some observations, uh, based upon this year's report card. First, let remind you, and I believe that we've had this conversation as a board in the past, um, our students are more than just a test score number. I'm reminded of that fact each time I see how our students perform in any given athletic contest or competition, sing or play a musical instrument at a scheduled concert, or view examples of student artwork on display in each of the buildings of our schools. I'm also reminded that our students are more than just a test score number when they perform random acts of kindness, not only for others, peers, but for adults as well. And adhere to behavioral expectations that we set in the district, being safe, being respectful, and being responsible. Um, as you note on the district report card, we meet expectations. Um, there's a color-coded band, again, on the left-hand side, and then a range of, of numbers on a scale of 0 to 100. We meet expectations. Um, each of the building administrators, um, shared their own school report card with their staffs. Um, pleased to report that both of the elementaries significantly exceeded expectations. Each of them in their own way, and I would guard against any comparisons. If you look right at the bottom of the report card, it basically tells you, these are not meant to be used for comparative purposes, district to district, or school to school, or school to school within a district. However, that's the first thing people want to do, is they want to compare. It's apples, kiwis, and kumquats. So don't make the comparisons, they're not fair. It's the same test, but there are way too many demographic variables. Here's an example, middle school. Middle schools in the state of Wisconsin can be grades seven and eight, they could be grades four through eight. It's not a fair playing field, we're not only compared to grades seven and eight. I can tell you, some of the schools in our Trailways Conference actually only issued two report cards, elementary and high school, because they consider high school 7-12. No one's been able to answer my question in terms of who established that. I want to know, because perhaps our scores may differ if we're a high school report card 7-12, and not a separate 7-8, 9-12, and here's why. 10th grade only has one measure on their report card, they're talking about adding the ACT Aspire as another measurement. That's the only measurement that's there. And we can get into a whole philosophical conversation about all of this, but it's a good question. The, the comparables aren't there. That's us, that's our score for the district. It's, as a district, we do, every building, every building in the, in the district at least met expectations, the district exceeded. For Eagle was an 83.5, significantly exceeds Palmyra Elementary, 85.2, significantly exceeds Palmyra Eagle Middle School, 63.5 meets, and Palmyra Eagle High School, 70.6 meets. So, in other observations, I'd just like to say, obviously, kudos to our staff, and thank you for the work they do each and every day. Um, you know, they come to school trying to prepare students to be college, career, and life-ready. Um, some observations from this report card, um, in particular for the district. Uh, we met state of, of Wisconsin, uh, scores in math growth. So here now, we're looking at how do we compare to the state scores? And again, that's not necessarily a fair or accurate comparison. Um, the elementary version to the middle school explanation is, some of the elementaries in the state only have grades K through 3. That means they're only testing one grade, that would be third grade, because K1 and 2 doesn't participate. I know of a district that has a K3 school that is so small, they have less than 20 kids in third grade, they don't even issue a report card, because you issue nothing, because there's no statistical significance for anything less than 20 students. So again, apples, kiwis, and kumquats. We met student indicators for absenteeism rate and dropout rate, not only as a district, but in each of the buildings. Here's where I think, if there's a trend that's beginning to evolve, it's one that you should take note of, and it's a positive one, is that we're closing gaps. We're closing gaps in English Language Arts, math, and the graduation rate. And I think there are some reasons why we're doing that. We have done curriculum work and adoptions lately at the elementary level in Readers and Writers Workshop. As those students progress from the elementary buildings, we should see that impact eventually at the middle school and high school. We now, for the first time, have a articulated district-wide science curriculum, that being Discovery Science. We've recently done science, uh, excuse me, social studies adoptions, K through grade 11, and all the AP courses. So in other words, a common playing field in language relative to curriculum. We purchased the updated 2018 version of Math Expressions for grades K through 6. We have a new physical education curriculum. We have scheduled intentionally intervention and resource periods in each of the respective buildings to give students an additional boost that might have a need. English language programming, you know, we dedicated quite a few resources to this year in terms of personnel. We have also, um, learning support and instructional coaching being done at the elementary levels. The recent Learning for All Initiative, that we'd like to have a presentation for the full board, um, in the next couple of months. And again, putting staff where they need to, to be. Um, you'll notice one of the buildings in particular has a significant amount of support, that's because that's where the need happens to be. And I think you'll see the result being a positive in that particular building. So again, report cards are valuable, but a single piece of information. I think we use this information as data teams meet, as vertical teams and grade-level teams meet in the various buildings. Um, we provide time during the school day and the school year to best prepare our kids to basically meet the mission statement that Tara read at the very beginning of the meeting. So I entertain any questions that you might have.
I was going to say, I, I agree, we are doing the curriculum, all that is, we're doing all these fantastic things, and I think, I would like to hope we'll even make more improvement next year. But how many of those things were in place, or weren't in place, I mean, aren't really reflected on here even?
Right.
It's like the Learning for All Initiative,
And EL. And EL is brand new, right? So those would be new.
Yeah, so we can't really take those into account yet, and hope to see more improvement.
I think you're right, there's room for optimism. I, I do think that if, if we look at this measure, which is the student achievement measure, we do have some ways to go in English Language Arts and math overall. But it's positive to know we're closing gaps for those subgroups that, you know, are typically underserved, or whose needs are not met, and the trajectory for the student growth appears to be on track.
As far as math, since now my kids are in high school and out of high school, so I don't know what there's, are we still doing anything with the elementary students, coming to middle school, and the middle school kids taking high school courses?
So a lot of the elementary program for advanced learners, the light's on, but I'm still home. The elementary program for advanced students typically is being done still on-site in the elementary buildings. A number of them are doing things like Khan Academy, and/or an accelerated pace for the curriculum for mathematics. Um, what we've found for students who came to this building from the elementaries is by the time they get to 10th and 11th grade, there are huge holes or gaps because they weren't part of a concerted effort around math instruction. A lot of it was left to the individual.
I would disagree with that, because my kids both came up here for, like, in seventh grade on, and Brandon's a sophomore in pre-calc, Honor's pre-calc. And, I don't know, I just thought that was a huge advantage to them, being able to progress through the math like that. And I feel if you have a kid that's that gifted, which I know I have nephews coming up that are gifted, um, you know, that I just, I don't think, I agree, we have a lot more with the Khan Academy, and Alex, there's a lot of programs out there where you can individualize it more. But I know, also as a teacher, that when you have 25 kids in class, it is hard to differentiate to meet the needs of those really high-level kids, and we do have some of those, so.
There's no question, and I was painting with a really broad brush, obviously there are individual students that could benefit. Long and short of it is, Mr. Damrow, as the middle school math teacher, has worked between the elementary math teachers and the high school math teachers to make sure that we're identifying the right kids. So as an example, the last two years in the spring, we do administer a screener to see where kids actually may be at. That can also help identify where those gaps may be. For some of those kids, that may go back to second grade, because they've been at an accelerated an accelerated pace, perhaps, relative to grade-level peers. And the problem is, again, once they get here, for some of those kids, those gaps expand even further, and it takes a little bit longer to fill those gaps in, to get kids ready for pre-calc and trig and all the advanced math classes. So, do we rule it out? No, it can happen, but that would be the exception rather than the rule, probably moving forward.
So what, is what you're saying, that there's not enough, you've created this gap where this one or two kids have outpaced the group, and now you've got this gap hole where these kids are up there, and then there's, you're skipping a year almost, basically, so to speak, of curriculum.
Yeah.
Because there's no kids to fill in that gap, because the accelerated ones have moved up, and the normal course people or children have stayed where they're at, and you've... Is that fair?
Yeah, the interesting thing about math as a content discipline is that there are different kinds of math. Geometric thinking is significantly different than calculus or trigonometry. So the gaps tend to be in really mathematics-specific areas that surface as the kids get older. Again, broad-brush, some students are just very well adept, adept at doing very well in math and close those gaps on their own. Others, we need to have some intention around that. So there has to be some time for that to happen, or some intentionality around that, so that, as was suggested, somebody's supervising and monitoring that to happen, and we are doing that.
I don't understand who we're seeing the gaps with. The kids who are in the advanced classes have gaps? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. By the time they get to 10th and 11th grade, there are kids who have these huge gaps. And I can get you...
Have gaps in what?
In mathematical understanding, so they're not prepared to take the upper-level classes by the time they get to junior, senior year.
I don't understand.
So they've accelerated, they've accelerated out of their normal grade, and then they get to some level, whatever that is, where they're not prepared to take the next step?
That's correct. Third and fourth grade math is significantly different than trigonometry.
Well, we can progress levels.
Right, so, okay, I think, so they...
I can get you something from the math department if you want.
I can wrap my head around that.
I can get you something from the math department if you want.
That's fine.
We have kids that are in classes that are not prepared to be successful then. Not all kids, some kids.
Some.
So we're doing a disservice.
Some are prepared, some are not prepared.
Correct.
And shouldn't necessarily have been in the advanced?
Right.
Not that they shouldn't have been in the advanced, but...
There's holes in what they know. There's an assumption that when you get to an advanced class, you have that knowledge.
Because they progress through the more basic things quicker.
Correct. But I can get, obviously, if you need more, I can get you more. Happy to do that.
I think one of my observations, and I'd, correct me if I'm wrong, but this program that Carrie Tim started what, two years ago, maybe three years ago, regarding the kids that weren't going to graduate, and it was the, yeah, and she's even worked through with several kids through summer programs, and, I mean, I, I think, and aren't we seeing some of that on here?
Not necessarily.
Sharon says yes.
Sorry.
Not on, because they're not taking the forward exam.
Graduation rate?
You might see it in graduation rate. Those students would take high school equivalency exams when they're prepared to do so, and we have had success there, generally speaking, I think, and don't quote me on this, I think we had all but one student last year successfully pass all those exams. This also doesn't address the ACT, so I know there are intentional efforts working with juniors to do ACT prep prior to the ACT being administered, and keep in mind that last year, first time, all kids in 10th grade took the ACT, regardless of whether they were going to go to college or not.
I think, I think it, yeah, even if it is graduation rate, or just not getting overwhelmed and dropping out, you know, I think that's, that program's been a huge benefit to us. Mr. Hoff, would you...
Oh, ma'am, you're in charge. It is a vice president.
All right, committee reports. Technology Committee.
Tech Committee met on November the 20th. We are going to meet again on January the 15th. The state of Wisconsin has issued recently, just the week before Thanksgiving, new information and technology literacy standards. They're tied to international benchmark standards. The committee's going to take the month of December to review what those are and to determine how that then aligns with our curriculum. So things like, where do we do keyboarding? Do we even do keyboarding anymore? Some of the new standards embed technological opportunities within any content area, or some content area specifically. So it's not like you would have a keyboarding class like the old typing class for some of us when we were kids any longer. It's just an expectation that you would have that skill. So we want to review that to see what the impact is moving forward, but we won't meet again until the 15th of January.
I have a technology question, and if this is not appropriate time, just tell me, and I can send you an email. I'm still getting quite a bit of feedback regarding the smart boards being removed out of the grade schools.
Urban legend and rumor.
Okay. Good, good answer. Building your grounds committee report.
All right, we met this evening. Started out with the air quality test at Eagle Elementary. Those results came back exceeding the thresholds, so everything, there was a one minor issue with a, what was it, a fan, or I guess it was air...
Recirculator.
Recirculator, something.
Air handler.
Air, air handler.
HVAC unit.
So that's going to be handled, but all, I guess, tests inside the building were good. So, we approved putting up some signs around the front of the high school here for drop-off, pickups, just too many, too many cars, close pedestrians, kids walking into school, and cars flying through the driveway here. So, the elementary roof situation has essentially been put on hold. We're recommending, looking at alternatives versus the minimum of $16,000 to do any with that snow issue there. So, going to look at alternatives for that. Cameras, a bunch of cameras here that are not working. We're going to try to replace them with a better camera, maybe we can do, one camera can take the place of two, and we can move things around to try to save wherever we can, and so that's slowly going to be a slow replace and fix process there. Eagle Elementary flooring, I guess, we essentially told the flooring company to, that we were going to do something. They bought $24,000 worth of product, and now we're not doing that, so they are looking to be reimbursed for that purchase, so it was fun. That's it.
Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
I can, sure, that's, I can, seen some mics on. We were going to do a third of the floor at Eagle prior to the fire, but because of the fire, we postponed that flooring, and they can't get it done over Christmas. So basically, the company has bought these $24,000 worth of tile that is presumably going to sit there until next summer when they can do it, so they want to be paid for the tile they've already bought, even though they're not going to complete the job, basically paying for the materials. So we went back to Rich and said, can we pay half of it now instead of the whole thing, just with the strain that's on the budget? We can, again, I understand from the company who bought it, they've got this product sitting there, they want to be paid at least for the tile, not necessarily the service of putting it in, but they purchased the tile, and it's all sitting there.
And it was a signed contract?
Yeah, they had a PO. Right.
All right, thank you, Building Your Grounds. Finance Committee report.
Basically, we met earlier this evening at 6:00. The people from Baird were here to talk about the debt refinancing, and basically, that was the extent of our conversation of those. In your packet there, there's four issues, really the only issue that is presumed to adjust is the one with the 5.5% interest rate, which is Fund 38, Issue 3, and that shows $1.3 million. It's really 870, and by the time we actually get around to doing it, it'll probably be 800, 785, so we will approve them to go move forward and lower that interest rate to 375, saving this, the math was 9,000, but if we're going to pay off another seven, you're probably at 8,000 a year over the next seven or eight years. And I believe that, is it Sharon, anything?
Thank you. Finance Committee, Public Relations Committee.
Carrie.
Stephanie was excused tonight. She was not here, but she sent along an update on things. The first newsletter, as all of you should have hopefully received, did go out, and it looked beautiful. Again, Stephanie did a great job, a lot of great information in there. She is also still working on the website accessibility. Our district page is actually doing pretty well with that. There's a few things that, that we need to work on, but our, our page compared to others is, is very accessible, but Stephanie's still updating. Honor and educator, I believe it's a total of nine nominations have now been received for this year. Total of $320 collected towards that, that'll go in the community fund. Let's see, the delivery of the gifts and placement of plaques for those teachers that have been honored will be done by December 19th, and then Stephanie is working on the next Realtor Open House, which will be at Eagle Elementary on Thursday, February 22nd, from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. So she is working on getting out hard copies of invites and an e-invite as well, to hopefully have a larger presence this year.
Awesome. Thank you, Public Relations. I do want to say I apologize, curriculum policy does not have a report because I was sick. But we do have a second reading on the agenda and the calendar, you know, nothing major, and I appreciate my committee looking past my illness. Administrator reports. Sharon.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things that I wanted to talk about, since I was sick at the last meeting, really sick. The first one is the energy efficiency project. Your $7.9 million that you borrowed towards energy efficiency measures. I did a study, I went back to May of 2014, which was the start of the project, until June 30th, 2016, and I just compared gas and electric. I didn't go into water, I didn't go into, and some of those other measurable things, but as of June 30th, we had saved $171,948, and I think that that is a great amount for just gas and electric. We talked about the per pupil increase, and so I wanted to explain exactly how that went. We had $200 that the state gave us per child. We have 806 children, that amounts to $161,200. Open enrollment, regular education went up $307 per child. We have 333 children, regular education children, for a total of $102,000. Of that 161, 102 was spent on regular education, open enrollment. Special education, open enrollment went up $207, and we have 34 of those, that's another $7,000. Private school vouchers, now these are children that we cannot trace back. If we call DPI, they quote privacy laws and cannot give us names, so we cannot even verify that these are children that live in our district. But they cost us another $38,942. So in the end, we had $12,989 left of our $200 per child. Not a lot, but it was something. To that, we just added it to the regular budget. But that's what ate up our $200 per child. Open enrollment, private school vouchers.
That we cannot.
That we cannot verify, correct. Okay? With that in mind, we are getting $204 increase, we know this for next year, since it's a two-year budget. Even with the $204 increase, there is another increase to open enrollment, regular education, and open enrollment, special education in the works. Again, private school vouchers isn't going anywhere, so we're going to have almost a zero increase again next year, especially given the fact that our enrollment is dropping, so we'll have less kids to multiply that $204 by. With that in mind, is why I polled you and asked you your availability for a finance committee meeting. I think we have some serious topics to discuss. I don't want to, I wish I had a crystal ball. I wish I could see the future, but I can't, and, and so I would like to just put out my concerns to you. I think you need to make some serious thinking towards a solution for next year. We're going to need it, in my estimation. I had hoped for Thursday, January 11th, given that that's two days after the leadership team meeting, and I have already asked our leadership to come back to me at that meeting with some ideas and some thoughts on what they can do with their staffing, what they can do in their own buildings. And so I was kind of hoping for January 11th. But as I polled you guys, January 25th, Thursday, January 25th, seemed to be a better day, that more could attend, and we are hoping at 4:30. Scott, you weren't here, so I'm hoping that that's going to make...
Yeah, it's better.
Oh, cool, okay. So I'm hoping that you all can be there. We'll have it here, and I will have as close to numbers as a person can get in January before the next year.
Can you put together a list of those transfers? Again, you don't know the private school ones, but the transfers out, and probably the transfers in by grade, again, is that trend continuing? Can we project that out? How many over years, or is it starting to taper off and come back where we're not going to lose as much to open enrollment as compared to what we are now?
We can put that together. I don't know the answer.
By grade? No, no, but yeah, not for today, but for the 25th.
We do.
Right, where we, where you can say, okay, by grade, it's 10, and then eight, and then six, and then five, where it's 12, 14, 16, 18, where it's giving...
This many seniors are graduating out, and yeah, we'll put that together.
I just think that would be helpful, knowing, here's where the problem was, we seem to have curtailed it temporarily. Is that going to continue with the same people, or is it not going to continue, or taper off, whatever it is?
And one of the problems we're going to run into, that we'll all see is, as we graduate, so... So one of the problems we're going to run into is, as we see more of these students graduating off, senior roll...
That's our, those are our big classes, too. So we're taking off dollars off of everything, but I haven't had enough time with that tonight. We're going to take dollars off of the whole total, so we're going to reduce the whole body count, we're going to reduce a big number of open enroll, but in turn, reduce the whole body count, too, so.
That's true.
That's true.
All right, thank you. On that happy note, we're going to approve the consent agenda. The consent agenda is approved in one full sweep, so I just need a motion to take care of that.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda is passed. Action item A, consider approval of second reading of the following revised policies, 0155 regarding committees. Do we do this one at a time, or can I just do them both? And 5460.01 diploma deferral.
Move to approve the approval of second reading of following policies, 155 committees and 5460.01 diploma deferral.
Any questions? Comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Right. B, consider approval of annual resolution. The school board of PEASD annually allows for the prorated utility fees used during community activities to be considered rent and therefore paid by AD fund community service.
I move to approve of annual resolution. The school board of PEASD annually allows for the prorated utility fees used during community activities be considered rent and therefore paid by AD fund community service. Have we done this before? We never worded it?
It has never had to come to a resolution. The new auditors wanted it this way.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that, that will pass. C, consider approval of the 2018-2019 school calendar.
Move to approve the 2018-19 school calendar.
Second.
Justin, are you okay with where the spring break is?
Well, I don't really care about the spring break. That's fine. But I guess my thing is, is I would like to revisit starting school in August and being done at the end of May.
Can't do it by state law.
We can appeal. We can ask for a waiver.
You have to have a legitimate reason like a building construction project?
Milwaukee does it.
Milwaukee has some extenuating circumstances with a demographic that's significantly different than ours. I can tell you flat out, DPI will not approve the waiver.
Why not?
This goes back to the legislation related to tourism and.
I understand that, but we haven't, we're not in a tourist area.
Nor is 95% of the state.
Our demog, close to the same of Milwaukee. We're not in a tourist area. That, that's my opinion. Football starts, everything starts.
And you might recall, last year, this board submitted a resolution that we sent to our representatives supporting the proposed change at the time in the law that would have allowed districts to begin middle to latter part of August. That legislation never went anywhere.
Anybody else?
Well, as a board, is that something that we want to do, I guess? I mean, is that just something Justin feels, or is it something? I mean, as, as an administrator, is there a reason why, you know, that you would be, I, I get what you're saying about what, that you don't feel the state would allow it, but is there anything on the administration side as to why you would not do this?
No, there's not, and I can certainly put something together for you and on your behalf if you wish.
Matt?
I mean, it doesn't sound like it would be a waste of effort. I think that everybody would feel good about in August to be done at the end of May. Isn't it an important issue considering all of the other things that we have to worry about right now? So, I don't know what, I don't know what kind of effort that takes to, if you would allow it.
No, it, it's something I can certainly look into. I believe it's simply a matter of sending a petition with a rationale, which I would basically take from the resolution letter because those reasons haven't changed. The one thing that this does do potentially, although January is still early or even February, is letting our families know what next year's calendar will be. I, I have, through Tracy, been advised that we've had a number of calls relative specifically, what's the first day of school and when is spring break? And those typically are the questions that you get relative to the calendar.
Well, and based on that, we should still go through the motions, and it might be the following year.
Right, I mean, it's not gonna change for, if we, if we applied, it wouldn't be for next year already.
My.
Could we do it? No, right, we're just. No, it's, it's fine. I'm just saying for the future. Again, 'cause we can't, you're probably not gonna, if you applied for exception now, you're not gonna be able to change it for next q, school year.
It, I would have to check on when the due date for an application for the following year's calendar is due. I can't comment, I don't know when that is. But if there is time, we could still do it. It would just delay your approval of the proposed 18-19 calendar. Nothing would prohibit us, however, for looking at this for 2019-2020, correct?
Or presumably going back and changing it if someone really wanted to, but I don't, I'm not a fan of that.
You could do that. I think that in all likelihood, the change would be, when would be the first day of school, and the last day of school would be sometime probably prior to Memorial Day. I don't think spring break would change because the, the impetus to put that break at the end of March was because it falls between winter and spring athletic seasons.
And the third, fourth quarter. So, if the third quarter was actually moved, it would just be one week earlier.
I would personally like to see spring break moved up one week because of that, but the quarter ends on the 22nd, so it doesn't make sense to.
The principles are, right. I mean, I mean, and I think that was the, that was the issue why we changed it to the way it is now.
Correct.
Or at least we haven't. Right, if you started one week earlier, it's just gonna move that up.
Move it back.
Everything up one week earlier. No, that's fine.
So, I guess for some clarification, since there's a motion in second but not action taken, either take action or table and let me know whether or not you would like me to pursue a petition for the start date for 18-19 or for 19-20.
Looking forward, right.
Looking forward for 19-20.
Agreed, agreed.
Yes.
Yeah, agreed.
Awesome. As stated earlier, items D and E have been removed from the calendar. Number eight, district administrators' report. Mr. Dr. Bloom.
Thank you. I just, congratulations and note of appreciation and recognition to music staff and students for those holiday concerts that have already taken place. I know there are a couple of them yet to come before winter break. I was able to attend Eagles last Tuesday night and Palmyra's last night, and they were very enjoyable and wonderful. And for a guy that doesn't care much for Christmas, it helped a little bit with the snow getting me into the, the spirit. I did wanna make note that a week or so ago, we did have a signing of Lauren Stefanczak, who is going to be playing softball at the Milwaukee School of Engineering. So, that event was very well attended. Most of her teammates were here, so that was really nice to, to recognize Lauren. I included in your electronic board packet a kind of Reader's Digest condensed version of the state budget as it impacts education. There are several things that changed once the budget got to the governor's office that will have an impact in all likelihood on policy moving forward. So, as an example, things that we used to refer to as youth and course options are now early college credit options. Whether it actually changes in practice beyond just a change in name, I'm not yet certain. But there are a couple of things there to be mindful of. As Sharon mentioned in her report to you, there's changes in the way that financing is done for open enrollment and also for the voucher program. Keep in mind that as we move forward over the course of time, there is more public dollars going to other than public schools, and I don't wanna politicize it beyond that. Next thing I would talk about is the 2018 WASB resolutions. There's an electronic version, and I did a summary of the various resolution proposals and a recommendation. There isn't any of them that I don't think that we would support for a variety of reasons. Some of them don't impact us at all, but in the interest of local control for other boards or for an equity issue, we could put these on the agenda again for January since that meeting is before the delegate assembly, which Scott will be attending on your behalf. There was also, after the deadline for submission, an additional resolution that had to do with referenda, that in my cursory look at it again for right now, doesn't impact us because we're not a negative tertiary, correct? We are, so potentially it would impact us then, relative to Wawatosa's referenda. So, I had initially put that down as a support because it would give local control, but it's tied to the new referendum law, which is also referenced in that Reader's Digest version of the, the budget for you to look at. Reminder, spring election scheduled for Tuesday, April the 3rd. We have two seats, both incumbents up for election. Agenda for the January 22nd, teacher in-service is being finalized. Hope to have that done early in January when we return from winter break. And I think that's all I have for you.
Last year, you kinda had a rotating basis where the administrators from each building came. Is that coming again? I mean, it just seems like we're kind of.
You had me tonight, State Report Card.
Yes.
We had talked at C and P about a couple of things. One, the Learning for All initiative we had talked about. We had talked about the EL programming. If there's another topic that you'd like, yeah, we can certainly do that. We previously had Ms. Tim come to talk about the LAUDY program.
Right. No, I, I agree. It feels like I'm getting out of, like, I haven't seen Matt or, I mean, other than the learning session, listening session, or.
Or Steve. Yeah, we can get either one of them, sure.
Yeah, I thought, that's what I thought. I thought they were supposed to be on a regular, just so we can stay in touch with them.
I'll get one or the other of them scheduled for January and February. Would that be okay?
I, I mean, I, I don't want.
I'm all for that.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Bloom, for your thorough report, as always. Any announcements and/or board comments?
I still have three tickets to sell for the fishery if you haven't already purchased.
All right. Upcoming meeting and events, we have a list there that you can read through. At this time, I'm going to consider a motion to adjourn to closed session. The board will consider a motion to move to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19.851(c) to wit, to consider employment or performance evaluation data of public employees over which the board exercises responsibility. Roll call, vote, please. Ms. Tracy.
Carrie Alice.
Yes.
Justin Thomas.
Yes.
Cory Jones.
Yes.
Scott Hoff.
Yes.
Tara Bowman.
Yes.
Matt Mecca.
Yes.
Amy Wild.
Yes.
All right, thank you for your time. You're dismissed.